This conference will now be recorded.
I've not seen John Carpenter or Megan Thompson show yet, but hopefully they will here in just a little bit and we'll get started.
Hello?
Hey Deb. All right, Megan has joined us. Welcome Megan. We're waiting on John and I think we should be in good shape.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes ma'am.
Perfect. I just want to make sure. It's been a technical issue kind of day, so.
Not a problem. Thank you for joining us.
Hey Ed, John is having connection issues and is going to call in as well.
Okay, that sounds fine. Thank you Paul. Tell me whenever you think you want to get started, we can.
Okay, well we can go ahead and get started. Hi everybody. Welcome to the last meeting of the year. 2020 is almost over. I don't know about you all, but I'm not sad to see it go. I had the agenda here and now I've lost it. Okay, um, you want to just, why don't we, we'll wait until John's on maybe to do the introductions, just so he and Megan will know who we all are. So while we're waiting for him, do we need to approve the minutes from our last meeting?
That would be great.
Has everybody had a chance to read them?
Move approval.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second to approve the minutes from the, I believe it was the November meeting. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, we are approved. I see John has joined us. Hi John. This is Lauren. Hi Lauren. Let's go ahead and start our round of introductions. I'm just going to call you out as I see you on my screen. So I'm Tammy Henderson. I am Community Relations and Governmental Affairs Executive Director of those for the North Kansas City School District. Terry, you're next.
Hi, I'm Terry Wolf with Northland Neighborhoods.
Ed?
Good morning all. This is Ed Linderberg with Northland Neighborhoods. Thank you for joining us.
Eli?
Hi everyone. I'm Eli O'Sullivan Kurtz with Northland Neighborhoods. Glad to be here.
Deb?
Deborah Herman, Northland Neighborhoods.
Alan?
Alan Napoli, City of Gladstone.
Officer Jones?
Good afternoon, Officer Rick Jones and Officer Bill Keeney.
Good morning everybody, or good afternoon that is.
Bren? Bren, are you there? Come back to Bren. Paul?
Good afternoon. I'm Paul Masal Motzwoke from, I'm a Northland constituent. I serve on the Northland Homeless Assistance Coalition and represent Shelter KC.
Awesome. Thanks. Dave?
Hi, Dave Mecklenburg. I'm Vice President of NNI. I also serve on the Kansas City Missouri and the Clay County Parks Boards.
Great. I have caller three and I don't know who you are. Caller three? Looks like I'm a radio DJ.
Caller three, I believe you're the only person who's joined by phone, so if you're listening and you're joined by phone, feel free to introduce yourself.
Tammy, this is Bren. I don't know if it's me. It kicked me out and I came back in. I can't tell how I look now because I got a few meetings at the same moment going on, but this is Bren McCann with Curry Real Estate Services. I apologize.
Caller three, we still don't know who you are, so if you'd let us know, that'd be great. David King?
I'm with NNI and I represent the Sherwood Estates Neighborhood.
Oh, perfect. Who am I missing? Lauren?
Good afternoon. Lauren Arthur, State Senator for District 17 in Clay County.
Great. And I've saved Megan and John for last because we're so pleased to have them join us today, so I think we'll just kind of let you guys introduce yourself and then maybe talk a little bit about what some of your hopes are, some of the reasons you maybe ran for county commission and what you see this next when you're sworn in in January, how you see all this playing out.
Okay, so I'm going to let Megan go first in a second. I've got to try to figure out how to do something real quick. I'll be back with you in one minute, very soon. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Megan, it's all yours. You're muted, Megan. You're on mute.
Can we tell it's been a crazy day? Yeah, so sorry about that. These multiple meetings at once has made things a little fun today, so, but no, thank you Tammy for that very warm introduction and I want to thank you all for having us to this meeting and all the members of NNI for allowing me to join today and say a few words to you all. Now I have paid attention and I've been very impressed with all NNI's work over the years. As county clerk for the six years, I've been part of it and following it and seeing what's going on and I'm really excited to work with you guys and find more ways in Clay County and NNI to work together for positive change for our citizens. So that's your disposal, so whatever you guys need from me. I really did run for this office to clean up the mess and it has been just absolutely terrible up in the courthouse and I think a lot of people are aware of that and they've seen it in years. I'm just really excited to join Jerry and just bring some good common sense back to our community.
To me.
To you.
So thank you for having me and Megan. It's good to be with you all. It's always good to join the NNI folks. So John Carpenter, I've been a resident here in Clay County my whole life and love the community, look forward to having this opportunity to get to serve as the County Commissioner along with Commissioner-elect Thompson and Jerry Nolting. You know, I think priority number one is restoring trust with the voters and with the citizens here in the county. You know, we've been making headlines for a while now for all the wrong reasons and so, you know, I think job number one is returning to an era of transparency and accountability and integrity and hopefully cooperation and collaboration and trying to work together to get things done and actually solve problems and challenges. And also, you know, meeting the challenges of the future. Obviously, this is a growing area. I think a lot of the growth is going to, in the Kansas City region is going to be right here in Clay County and, you know, that's an exciting prospect. There's a lot of good that can come from that. And we want to make sure we're putting the best face forward that we can, make sure that as people look at Clay County, there's a lot of facets to it, you know, obviously like the North Kansas City School District, Tammy, as you know, that's a huge draw, that's a huge bonus for the area. And there's so many things and we want to make sure that county government is on that list of positive things that makes families and businesses, when they look at our area, want to come here as opposed to get scared off by it. So that's really the top priority. We want to make sure that, you know, county funding is going to the right places, make sure it's based upon actual need rather than any other consideration. And we want to, you know, modernize and invest in county infrastructure, make sure we've got safe and thriving neighborhoods. And also protect the vital social services that the county government plays a role in, making sure that citizens, you know, especially our most vulnerable who need assistance are getting it in the right and efficient ways and make sure we protect all those services. So look forward to working with Megan and Jerry and honestly all of you all, you know, one of the things that I'm hoping shifts with our county government is that we have a more collaborative process. You know, the three of us don't know everything and don't have all the answers, so, you know, look forward to hearing directly from all of you in terms of ideas and suggestions for how to move forward in a positive way. So I'm happy to answer any questions, of course.
Anybody have questions?
I've got a couple. First of all, I want to thank you. Thank you for doing this this morning. Apologize, we're having trouble with some of our notification programs, kind of joining with Ms. Thompson and the technical issues. Two questions. One is, what would you do about COVID? Do you think Clay County ought to further shut down? I have tried to quit watching the news because it's absolutely terrifying and I would just like to kind of know your opinion. And my second question, and I really haven't followed this very well, so maybe I've missed announcements, but what's happening with annexes? I mean, we've got the old annex on 48th Street and a potential of a new annex and then I heard the new annex was stopped. Just out of pure curiosity, what's going on with that? Thank you.
Well, Megan, please jump in, obviously whenever. In terms of COVID, you know, I'm one who is in the, I think a similar mind space as you. I think it's a very serious thing and getting a lot more serious. I wish that there was more widespread public agreement on that issue and I'm pretty disappointed that there's not and I, you know, I think, I think a lot of this could have been avoided, I guess is my point with, with a unified and serious approach to the situation. You know, yesterday we had a whole bunch of new records. We're well over 100,000 people hospitalized now. We were at 30,000 in October. 60,000 was the all-time peak, so we've blown by that in a dramatic way and that trend line is continuing in the wrong direction. Had over 200,000 cases yesterday, had over 2,700 deaths. I mean, it's, it's a real problem and it's getting worse and, you know, the state government isn't doing much. Lauren and I have both frustratingly been parts of those conversations. Obviously, at the federal level, it's not nearly enough happening. We've got some good local leadership on it, but, you know, that can only go so far. This is a disease that doesn't stick to city or county boundaries and so without full nationwide participation, it's tough. So in terms of what Clay County can do, you know, a lot of those decisions are getting made through the health board and they've been tracking pretty closely with what Kansas City has been doing. And I, you know, I hope that continues. I anticipate frankly that Kansas City at some point is going to make additional restrictive measures. I'm of the opinion that that's probably necessary. I know that's controversial, but we're facing a situation where I think hospitals are pretty imminently going to hit capacity and frankly, even before we hit capacity, there's still the fact that thousands of people are dying every day. And if we can do something, and I think we can, I think science shows that we can to reduce that loss of life, I think it's really incumbent on us to do it. We've got the great vaccine news, right? So if we can make it a couple, two, three months here of everybody working together, I think we have the opportunity to save a lot of lives. So anyway, I guess I'm very frustrated that that's not happening and I'm going to continue encouraging everybody that I talked to at the state level and, you know, in my role as County Commissioner here in a month to encourage that. One of the most important things we can do frankly is get public buy-in. You know, it's not all a matter of policy and mandates. Part of it is just convincing the public to take action as individuals. Which means decreased social mobility, right? Not going out as much, more social distancing and then, and then to the extent that you do to wear a mask when you do. And if we can convince people to do that, I think that's a big part of the equation and I think everybody has a role to play in that. I think not just, I think all elected leaders do and I think all individuals do. I think to whatever extent you can put that out into the universe through social media or through conversations, I think that's a good thing. In terms of the annex, Megan, if you want to take that, you know, I talked a long time on COVID, you know, I think we're, I think there's some open-ended questions on that, on that situation, so if you want to talk about that.
Yeah, no, thank you John. Those are some really great questions, by the way, that you're asking us and I want to make sure that we do answer them and keep you all informed as best as we can. Right now with the annex, unfortunately, since we are only Commissioner-elect, we don't have the full piece of puzzles to put everything together and some of that's going to have to get, wait until we get sworn in and we can talk to some of the bond council to see where we're at. But I, it's my understanding as I've been speaking with John and Jerry that we're in hopes of not being able to move forward with this annex. It was a large sums of money that our county borrowed to utilize this. I have heard nobody in support, like really pushing for this and that's worrisome. And we do have county facilities right now that they might be a little rundown and they need some repair, but it's not going to cost us $22 million. So I'm very hopeful that we're going to be able to get in there, get something done, recoup some of the funds from this, once we get into January and then do some work on our current annex. Because it is a valuable piece of property and it's sitting on five and a half acres and it's, it still works great. They fix it up, you know, we just, we've let it just run down. So I'm a believer in you buy things and you take care of them and you restore them. You don't have to just throw it away and start new. So that would be my hope.
If there are other questions, please feel free to ask them or if you would prefer add them to the chat line and we will ask them for you. I have one.
If I might, can?
Go, Dave, go ahead.
Basically, being involved on a board with the county in the past few years, it's been rather disappointing that the communication with volunteers for the county are oftentimes kind of left out in the cold. We make recommendations, we never hear anything and all of a sudden, some plan is way down the road that we really, that would be under our purview and we really know nothing about it. And so that leads me to really what my question is. What are your plans for opening up the public meetings and making them more accessible to the citizens of Clay County? I know in the past couple of years, that's been cut off almost completely and I, as.
Dave, we're missing, you don't show yourself as muted, but we can't hear what you're saying. Try unmute and maybe that'll help again. Dave, you're muted. We didn't catch the end of what you were saying.
Okay. Well, my main question is, you know, your plans for opening up the county meetings for public input and public participation in the future and the type of format and the things that you have in mind for that?
Well, I'm happy to speak on that. I really believe that we need to bring back the public comment period. We need to be able to have citizens and like board members, anybody who has something to say to the commission to be heard. And that's been something that has been taken away from us over the years. We've lost a lot of our rights within the courthouse and I want to make sure that we restore all those, those rights so we can actually have a voice and you can have something to say to us. So if you're mad at me, I want you to come in and tell me and I'm going to make you a cup of coffee and we'll probably eat a piece of cake and it's, we're going to get things resolved. So, and that's kind of my, my attitude on it and I have watched this over the past six years and there's a lot of changes and I think people are going to be really surprised and really happy to see what's to come here in the next year.
All right, I'm bouncing back. Yeah, I think that's totally doable. So I think we're, you know, the goal is to shift the meeting times to make sure that more people can attend. Absolutely open up public comment period again. I think it's, I think that's an obvious step we can do. You know, I think the idea that you only get to speak to issues if you live in Clay County that are set on the agenda by the commissioners and you don't get to ever talk about anything that is of concern or issue to you, I think is wrong. In terms of, you know, working more with the county boards and making sure that they're more involved, you know, I think that makes total sense to me and so I look forward to, you know, I think there's definitely room for more collaboration across the board. A lot of the decisions that were being made have been being made, it seems like, are sort of tightly held, small groups of folks getting together and deciding things, not always with a tremendous amount of input or collaboration with others from the community. So I think we have a lot of room for improvement there and I think we're going to be able to get that done.
I have a quick question. You know, there's a lot more office holders in the courthouse than the commissioners alone. How, how do you see things improving with some of the other office holders once you are sworn in in January? Is that going to be, you know, a challenge or what are you, what are your feelings on that? Either Meg or Megan or John?
Because Megan has been one of those office holders for years and years, so she knows better than me.
She's been. Yeah, no. Well, thank you. Thank you Tammy. I will say I have a really great relationship and I try to have those good positive relationships with, with all aspects of our community leaders and our citizens and the other elected officials. I think it's really important to give good service and I will say my relationship with all of our current office holders and the ones that are coming in, they're, they're good. And I'm looking forward to working with them and having just positive interactions, moving forward with budget. If they have issues with their own offices and departments, I want them to feel comfortable that they can come and talk to us as the commission. I think we're going to have, it's going to be a different feel and a more of an open door policy. You can come and talk to us. I think it's going to be good. I and I work pretty closely right now with most of the other offices within the county government because as the clerk, we're just kind of the catch-all. So we get a little bit of everything and every couple of months, somebody within the courthouse gets a phone call from me or I show up in your office. And right now it's with a mask on, of course, with a binder full of tax information or whatever, but I guess, long story short, I feel that it's going to be, it's going to be positive. I'm feeling really good about it.
Same, yes. All of that.
I have a question, but first I want to say congratulations to John and Megan and I'm really. Thank you. And I'm really looking forward to working with you both and having a strong partnership going forward. I know in the past, at times, the commission and the delegation, including Republicans and Democrats from Clay County, that relationship has at times been adversarial, but I don't anticipate anything like that going forward. And I think we'll be able to do a lot more on behalf of Clay County residents with your leadership, so looking forward to that. I haven't heard a ton about the transition to the new form of government since voters approved our new constitution. So what does that process look like and how involved are you in that transition?
Do you want to take this one, John?
So in terms of like timeliness of things that need to happen, the good news is, well, for a lot of those changes, because, you know, the county did overwhelmingly pass the new constitution and they are going to usher in a number of changes. A little bit of that goes into effect right away, but most of it in terms of the substantive changes won't really go into effect until a couple of years from now. So we will have time. There's been some discussion about putting together like a transition study group or commission or whatever to make suggestions on how to implement it. We, right now, have some sort of immediate timeliness things in terms of the budget in January, because that's, you know, we're only going to get a few weeks after getting sworn in, you know, in which to do a fairly significant budget. There's also some pretty big staffing things, you know, there's going to, there's a lot of turnover in terms of folks who have been working for the county at the administrator level, but also just with various departments that, that sort of have an immediate need to make sure that we've got all those positions filled and that county government is marching on and fulfilling its duties. But yeah, after a couple of years, you know, I assume everybody knows generally some of the changes, but a number of the elected positions will no longer be elected positions, they'll be hired. We'll have a seven-person commission instead of the current three, starting in 2023. And there are some changes around the role of the, of the county administrator. And so, you know, that is a piece of it, right, is making sure that we bring in a new county administrator who is as qualified and good as possible to make sure that as we are implementing the transition, that we've got the right person in that role. I think we've seen time and time again in cities and counties that getting the right person in the role of administrator or city manager can make a big difference in terms of outcomes for implementing policy agendas. So those are my initial thoughts. Megan?
I think you kind of nailed it there, John. A lot of the changes will come into effect in a couple of years. They're not right away, even though the charter does go into effect on January 1. One of the big things that we'll see different right across board in January 1 is, as I will be leaving as clerk, we will be appointing an interim there. But other than that, it's all going to be kind of gradual and there is talk of bringing in some resources and a team to help us transition through this, so we make this seamless and, and good for our community.
One question that has come in through the chat is, Lauren was talking a little bit about the transition to the new form of government. This is a little more specific to the transition from the current commission to the, to the commission that we will have in January. How is that going? Is it going pretty smooth so far or is it still too soon to tell?
You want to go first?
Sure. No, if I understand the question, I think right now, the current commission, are we discussing the current commissioners or the new commissioners coming in?
We're talking about the transition from the old to the new. How's it going?
Well, luckily, there are some people that know what's going on a little bit. I have been in the courthouse for the past six years as county clerk. So a lot of this is not a surprise to me, what needs to happen right off the bat in January. We haven't had a lot of cooperation so far from the current commission, but I feel good about John and Jerry and I sitting down and we'll be able to get through a lot of this coming up. You know, and we're going to be doing a lot of an open meetings. We're going to eliminate the excessive executive sessions. People will stay informed and they'll. the excessive executive sessions. People will stay informed and they will see the kind of governing we'll be doing. And I think that's, I'm looking forward to the forward, you know, to 21. So I can't really do a whole lot about right now and some of the people who are in office and in these departments and their willingness to help us, but I know we're going to be able to move forward in a positive light.
Good.
Yeah, I would second all of that. You know, similar to the transition that's happening at the national level, I think there's room for improvement. But we're going to get it done and everything's going to be okay. And we're going to, we're going to move forward in a positive way. I'm very confident.
Awesome. Are you guys looking for, I know Jackson County ended up picking up Troy Schulte as their county administrator, I believe. Anybody out there lurking of that stature that we could tap into for Clay County?
Well, I think the goal is to have a whole process. So, you know, there's some short-term considerations in terms of making sure we have some initial staffing that happens. So that will happen. And that's very much to be determined. But in terms of long-term filling that position on a more permanent basis, you know, my hope is that we have a full, you know, public process in which we try to get somebody, the best person we can, and not just, you know, from locally, but, you know, have a nationwide search. And so, you know, yeah, no names. I don't think we have any sense of who the person will be. But I think we're very committed to making sure it's the best we can get and look forward to.
If I could insert my offhand comment, there is nobody of that stature.
Big shoes to fill. Ah, that's funny. Does anybody else have any questions, Deb or Ed? David?
I've got a, I've got a comment or a suggestion that, if I could, please. Putting on a different hat that I wear or a associated hat. I have served on the Clay County Children's Fund since its inception. It's been an absolutely marvelous experience. Great people on that board. One of our other experiences, one of my experiences early on, just to tell you a little bit about the spirit and heart of Clay County. One of the first calls I got after I was appointed was from one of the school district reps. And my first thought was, well, here we go. We're going to have all these school districts fighting with each other and fighting with us and everybody wants to be in first. What we found out is the school districts all work together. And in fact, some of our school districts, North Kansas City has certainly stood out, traveled to Missouri City to make sure that they could get a grant application in and put some programs together. It has absolutely. We just, we just completed our third year. I would encourage you and I can share the contact if you don't have it, information for Kathy Mack and the executive director. But I will tell you some highlights. In that first year, we served over 70,000 kids. And anyone that's worked with me knows how important this is to me. Our admin is running less than 2%. We are partnering and using other resources within the community. But I would encourage you, anyone here, to give her a call, talk to her. We'll be releasing that annual report very shortly. But it has, it's just been some really, I think, some of the best news out of Clay County.
And as a school, I can't thank them enough for what they've done for our students, particularly during this time when we've got kids that are home, in some instances, without the real supervision or supplies they need. We've turned to the Children's Services Fund a lot to help provide things for kids. And they've been a wonderful, wonderful partner. Deb, did you have anything else?
I don't think so.
All right. Anybody else have any questions?
Before we close, I'd like to remind everyone that NNI is moving. We will open at our new location on January 4. And that is at 5430 Northeast Shoto. It's the old Burlington Coat Factory location on the back of Antioch Crossing. And we look forward to, hopefully sometime soon, having meetings in person again there.
Well, I hope so. Well, I'm not going to let Lauren Arthur escape without asking a couple of questions of her. So why don't, how are things going in the not-so-special session that just ended, Lauren?
So the special session concluded after the Senate granted final passage of a $1.28 billion supplemental budget. And most of that money has been obligated, but we expanded the authorization and authority just for the governor to spend it so that we wouldn't have to send that money back to Washington DC at the end of the year. There's, it's unknown how much of that money that has already been obligated has been spent. We should have a clearer picture, since most of the departments have to turn in their receipts at the beginning of this month. So a lot of these programs have already existed. They've already spent down the money that was allocated to them, but that hasn't been communicated to the governor's office because those receipts weren't receipts, so to speak, weren't due, weren't due until the beginning of this month. So hopefully we'll have a clear idea going forward of what money remains. And I know John and I have been working really hard on trying to get that money spent, sent directly to Missourians and our communities because there are a lot of needs and people are really, really struggling and it's not going to get better before it gets worse. So feel free to contact the governor if there are particular needs that you've identified and hopefully there will be some monies available for those kinds of programs. The governor initially expanded the call of special session to include COVID liability immunity for small, for businesses, for schools, for hospitals, healthcare workers, et cetera. And then, for a number of reasons, there just wasn't much enthusiasm to do that in a special session. And the governor reversed course and withdrew that request. So we anticipate that that will be the last time that the legislature meets in this lame duck session. And then, it's unknown what next year will look like. I assume that we get sworn in in January and start work, hopefully in a safe manner. But all of, all of that's up in the air at this point. So I will also say, prefiling started the beginning of the month. If you have ideas for legislation or problems that you, that you've seen, be sure to contact me in my office and we're happy to work with you all on, on getting some legislation passed.
Thank you. Dan, I see you raising your finger.
Yes, that's me. And what Senator Arthur just said, can we get a Wayfair tax, please? I was on a conference call with National Legacies out long ago, and I think it was Mesa, Arizona, thought they were going to take a big hit in their sales tax. And they did brick and mortar, but because the Arizona legislature allowed them to use a Wayfair tax, actually came out really, really well. And I'm sitting here looking at our city budget thinking, if we had that, I mean, we get a use tax, but it's not nearly the amount of money we would get off of a sales tax if we get enacted on online sales.
So I feel like you set me up here. I actually, that's one of the pills that I've prefilled. So it's absolutely an issue that I'll continue working on.
Yay. Anybody else? All right. Dave, did you have something?
Yeah, just one final comment. NNI is extremely involved in Clay County and in our neighborhoods. And if at any time, please feel free to reach out to any of us on the board or members of NNI because we have a vested interest in the quality of life, in the success of our county. And if there's any way any of us can be of assistance to you as you begin this transition, you know, please let us know. We're going to be here to serve you as well as our constituents that are our members. And also, the new constitution is a little confusing to the average citizen. So as the steps of assimilating this program into the finalization in two years, I think it would be advisable to keep people as much aware of what's happening, when it happens, because that's where the real buy-in is. We, I think we were very fortunate to get the overwhelming support for a change, but let's make sure that it gets instituted in such a way that people are very pleased with the vote that they made.
Awesome. One last thing. Oh, John, were you going to say something?
I was just going to say absolutely, you know, I look forward to having those conversations. I agree, keeping folks updated about the changes that are being made is going to be important. I mean, I agree. It can be complicated. So I agree with that wholeheartedly. And please, you know, you said, reach out to you. And I, of course, will, but, you know, same to you. I, you know, I don't always know what I don't know. So if, please, please email, call, whatever, and I'd be happy to talk with you and look forward to it. Thanks.
Megan, did you have any final thoughts?
I agree with John on this. If there's anything you all need from us ever, please give us a call. If you just want to come and have a cup of coffee, if we ever get out of this pandemic and just have some cake, you let me know. You know where to find me. We just look forward to working with you all and forging these relationships and just creating a better place for all of us to work and live.
Wonderful. One final thing. We are going to be talking a little bit about topics for the 2021 calendar for this committee. So if anybody has any ideas as far as conversations or discussions or things of interest that you would like to have this committee hear about, discuss, whatever, just either let me know or Ed or Deb or Terry or, you know, anybody, let us know and we will add that to the list of topics that we're going to be trying to schedule for next year. So with that...
One of the things that NNI needs some assistance with, if anyone has, and maybe the school district or someone here on their business might have it, a way to share information that's efficient through email with selected lists that don't go to spam. Our meetings, these meetings, we send out invitations and you need to be invited and have the link to be able to join. And the reason we've done that is it seems that online virtual meetings have created a new monster. People can show up in your meeting. We've only had it once, but we've heard of it happening to other groups many times. Someone can show up and you have no idea who they are. With the most hateful, disruptive, we certainly don't mind hard questions. We don't mind people participating, but we don't need to provide a vehicle for some of the stuff we know others have experienced. So if someone knows of a way, we're having a really hard time. As spam filters get tighter and tighter, it's just tough. So we'd appreciate your help with that. I just wanted to say too, thank you for participating. If you don't have my contact information, give me a call. Be glad to share it. NNI is still operating almost. We were not letting people go into homes. We've had several clients and contractors get COVID. We've had a couple of clients die. To be real frank, I was not only worried about our staff contracting the illness, I was a little worried about all of our mental health. I mean, it gets real scary when you've got people around you coming down with it and dying. But we are doing everything else. No meetings in person. Everything's virtual. Home repairs are going on the best that we can. And just for everyone here's knowledge, last year we did over a million dollars in home repair. And I'll tell you, with Clay County's support, it used to be the only home repair we could do was in Kansas City. Kansas City gets real irritable about this, but I think we can all understand it. They give us money for home repair and they expect it to be spent in Kansas City. However, we've been able to leverage our funds to where now still about half those dollars have to be spent in Clay, in Kansas City. The other half can be spent and are spent in Liberty and Gladstone and Clay Como and some in Excelsior Springs. The further out the municipalities or the people are, it's a little tougher. But we certainly have expanded, but that's due to support. So feel free to give me a call if I can answer any other questions.
We're going to certainly miss the NNI holiday party this year and Councilman Fowler's world famous eggnog. But hopefully next year, right?
Well, I can always make some and drop some off over there for people to kind of swing by. Give Officer Jones something to do. He can just kind of camp out in front and people drive away.
To-go cups, yes.
Hey, you know, Dan, if Deb does an objection, we can set up a drive-through in the parking lot at NNI.
Okay.
I'll bring my Santa hat.
Our insurance man's sitting right there. And I think you have real concerns about that drive-through going on. No, he said.
He'll be the first one in line. What are you saying?
Oh my. Well, happy holidays.
We'll do the upper lot.
Hope you have a happy holiday. Probably be a different holiday gathering for many of us, but here's to the end of 2020 and a great start to 2021. So happy holidays, everyone. See ya. All right. Bye.
Real quick, Deb.
Deb, you still there?
Yes.
Hey, thank you so much. Bless you and your family for all that you've done for my family during this COVID. Just in case anyone else did not know, I did contract COVID. I am COVID-free now. It didn't hit me as hard, but everything that Deb was talking about, I agree 100%. And again, Deb, you are a champion. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. And just to note, one of our clients that died was 39 years old.
Oh, God bless.
Oh, man.
And if she had anything else going on, it wasn't apparent to us.
Oh, man.
Yes. So let's all be super careful and hopefully next month, next year, we're all back. And that's the most important thing.
Exactly.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Folks, my typical process...